Welcome to the Allen County Council Meeting on this Thursday, May the 19th. Call this meeting to order. Mr. Robson asks you to give the indication.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Oh, heaven and the Father, we be seated as we come at this hour. Thank you for this day. Thank you for this time to be servant to all the citizen of Allendale County. We ask that you will soften our hearts so that all that we do will be pleasing in thy sight. These are our blessing. We ask in holy son name we pray. Amen.
Amen. All right, we have four of our council members present. Approval of agenda.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
One thing we probably did have, the young lady here from Allen Fairfax, is she here?
Yes, she's here. Mrs. Carter.
Mrs. Carter, hey, Mrs. Carter, how are you?
Good.
All right, I'll make a motion under, let's just do this, you want to do it under your council report, Mr. Robson?
I'd be fine.
That's fine. Under Mr. Robson's council report, we got to recognize the special young lady from Allen Fairfax out of school. Our next approval of minutes.
So move, Mr. Chairman. We got five sets of minutes, including our budget meetings, and took a while to go through all of it, and I double-checked and double-checked, they all look to be good. Make a motion, we approve.
Second motion. No second, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Nays? All right, motion passed. All men, so accept it. Okay, welcome, everybody. We're here like again to the Thursday, May 19th meeting of the Allen County Council. Thank you guys for coming out. Public comments first, and we do a Miss Toni message. Miss Toni, come on down. How are you doing tonight, Miss Toni? Doing good tonight?
Yeah, how about you?
Good, good.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I'll be short and sweet for a change. In the past, the county council's concern over the previous treasurer, due to the past, due to the county council's concern over the previous treasurer, county council removed the administration responsibility for the general fund from the treasurer's office and placed it with the county administrator. This account prior to that had always been the responsibility of the treasurer. Since the treasurer that precipitated this action is no longer holding that office, it is time to move the general fund back to the treasurer's office where it belongs. The treasurer is responsible for handling the county's money. Also, there would be far less confusion with the money being in one place. As you are aware, all of the county's money does not go to the treasurer. In other words, the treasurer does not receive all the income that comes into this county. I'm asking that council discuss this matter tonight in executive session and vote on moving the general fund back to the treasurer's office. If council doesn't want to vote, then an explanation as to why the general fund will not be moved back would be in order tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Toni.
Mr. Chairman, do we need a motion to that effect? Because I know we have discussed moving that general fund back to the treasurer's department. Do we need to further discuss that, or can we just, for the record?
Aye. The council, how do y'all feel we need to do? Council?
We voted to move it from the treasurer's office, and it would be appropriate to go back, to go back and put it into a vote and move it back to the treasurer's office. We voted to move it from the treasurer's office.
Tell them we would receive funds back to the treasurer's office.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we move the general account back from administration office back to the general treasurer's office.
The general treasurer's office.
Second, whatever. Motion's on the floor?
It's been taken, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You did say.
I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? All right, motion passed. All right. Next, we have Mr. Charles Allen. Charles?
Good afternoon, everybody. I was up here in January, and I asked for a hearing to be assigned to try to rezone the house there in Sycamore, and y'all promised me then it wouldn't take 30 days. It's been five months, and this hasn't been resolved yet, and I just want to know why it hadn't been resolved.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
We did appoint a zoning board of appeals, and it took us a while to get, we had, it took us two months to get the board nominated. Then it took us about a few weeks to get a meeting date, and then the tornado hit, and I'd asked Mr. Judy, I think last week, to try to get the board back together. Got with Mr. Mole, got with all the board members, and they are going to have their first meeting on June 7th.
That's what they hear? Is that this meeting here?
Yes. And as soon as they have their initial meeting, they'll be presented with all their stuff, and I would hope shortly after we could have a hearing for it.
Okay.
I know it took longer than we promised, but unfortunately, that's.
Well, I know how things work.
... we were dealt, so. But we will, the board is established, we just have, we just having trouble getting the meeting going. June 7th, we have our first meeting. Organization we need to name officers, or they'll elect their own officers.
It'll be here, zoning office.
It'll be the admin office.
Conference room, admin.
But that meeting's only going to be just an instructional meeting, and for them to nominate officers, and for them to get the information they need on.
Okay, then I'll be notified when the hearing's going to be?
Yes.
Okay.
But I mean, it'll take a little time, you know, they'll have to get their information, read over it, and get familiar with, with the bylaws and stuff, and as soon as that takes place, we'll be in touch with you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Ann Rice?
I'm essentially making this report for Gracie Hyers tonight. I'll keep Allen County beautiful. Gracie is the regional beautification coordinator from Southern Carolina, and she's doing a great job. Southern Carolina has a grant from Palmetto Pride for our two years to have her. And I have taken interim director of the Keep Allen County Beautiful Committee, and we've hit the road running. We've gotten the committee set up. We've had a meeting. The Keep Allen County Beautiful application is made to keep America beautiful, and that's a process that will take probably four to six months, and once that's done, we will have grants coming into Allendale for that effort. So we really feel good about what the progress has been made there. We also have scheduled a cleanup for the May 27th and June 4th as part of the Great American Cleanup, and these are kind of hot spots. May 27th, we're going to do Highway 278 from Allendale to Fairfax. On June 4th, we're going to do Bay Street from Memorial Avenue to Bluff Road, and Bluff Road from 301 to St. Marx and Old Barnwell Road over here. And so, and you pick up your supplies at Town Hall in Allendale. I don't only have one of these, I'll have more of these tomorrow. So we hope to have a good turnout for this.
Not doing anything on the highway for you?
Not this time. It's, I mean, we just.
It's anywhere you travel.
I know, but since we, we had to pick like three or four spots to do since we'd already had our big cleanup, and it was a great success, and I haven't been meaning to call the radio on a hat, but we had about 200 people involved and picked up 458 bags of trash. So it was a great success, and we're proud of it. But I'm really excited about a meeting that took place today with Mr. Herbie Ford, who is with Palmetto Pride, and he is over the enforcement part of Palmetto Pride, and we talked about cameras and other things. And Mr. Adrian Priest, Priestor, who is our DNR officer here in Allendale County, and also from Fairfax, has joined the committee, and he met with us, and he will be putting up cameras tomorrow in certain hot spots, and signs, you know, telling people, you know that.
Who picked these hot spots? Because I can give you some hot spots.
If you would give them to me, they will move them around. The committee picked them this time because we wanted to be able to get, hit the road running, but we can move them around or add more, because DNR has a lot of cameras they can put up, and Mr. Priest is going to be monitoring them.
That's right. I talked to Herbie a couple times, he just came over, seemed to be a good guy. He came from Aiken County.
Yeah, he's from Aiken County, but now he's working at the state, and he is, he's very good, and he told us about an organization we needed to join because that gives us a chance to get money for enforcement in addition to the Palmetto Pride grants, and that money can be used to buy things, you know, to help enforce.
Is this night camera vision?
Yes. Now, these are, these are just, they're like game cameras. They still have the cards, and they're wanting to get all the cameras, but they're researching it because one of the places they do want to put them is at the landings, but you have to have technology that we don't have at the landings.
You have to have self, you know, self, cell search to run over the.
Yeah, and as I was asking.
Was our little officer included in these, Mr. Jim Evans, was he there?
He was not there, but, but Mr. Priest is going to get in touch with him and catch him up to date on it, so he will be included. And he also gave us some tarp's and these flyers that go with it, and I'm going to pass these on to Mr. All to give out at the recycling centers so that when trucks come in and don't have tarp's on them, he can give them tarp's and telling them what they need to be doing to cover trucks, because a lot of the littering is coming from trucks that, that things fly out the back. So I'm, I'm excited about what's going on. I think it's a good thing, and so I hope that y'all are happy with what we've done so far. And the other thing is, we are still working on membership for the historical society, so if you have not joined, I have more membership forms here, and we will be having a retreat of Tuesday, a planning retreat to kind of move us a little further along, so I do have those. So I think that's the report.
Thank you, Ms. Ann. Next, Mr. D N.
Well, I came for one thing, but I'm going to have two things on my plate now. I want to say to y'all about Charles and ask this rezoning. The problem is with him is he doesn't understand that this appeals board cannot change anything, that they can only decide if y'all made an error in not agreeing to the rezoning. He doesn't understand that, so somebody needs to explain that to him. And secondly, he has already been told by the mayor and the council of Sycamore that they are not going to agree to any rezoning of that piece of property. It's been plainly put to him in plain English that that is not going to happen, and secondly, the town of Sycamore does not have public water, and it doesn't have public sewage, and in order to maintain a residential community like they're discussing, you have to have a commercial water system, and you have to have a commercial septic system, which costs thousands of dollars to put in, and the piece of property is not big enough to accommodate the commercial well and the septic system, because you have to have 150 feet around a commercial well with no obstruction. There's nowhere on that piece of property that you can drill a well and draw 150-foot circle around it without either running into my property, to his house, or the state right away. And if he got the well down, the drainage system from the septic system would interfere with it. So it's a dead duck. Sorry about his bad look. Secondly, okay, I'm going to move forward with this. Y'all know I had done the FY '23 funding grant for the 677,000 through Congressman Clyburn's office. The good news is, is that Mr. Goodson has had a meeting with them, and he and I both have another meeting with them next week. We are 99% sure from what we've been told that we are going to get the grant. It's a non-match grant, and Congressman Clyburn's office has handed it back down. Instead of it going through appropriations, it's going to go back down to urban development. And I'm going to meet with Bill Goodson in the morning at 11 o'clock. We're going to redo the structure. It's going to be the same contents of the original grant. They just want it put on USDA urban grant application, so it's basically just going to be a redo to meet their qualifications and, and resubmit that to them in Bamberg next week. But from all accounts, it is going to pass. We are going to get the money. If it went through appropriations, we wouldn't get the money until sometime fiscal year of 2023. Going through urban development, it can come faster.
When you say we're going to get the money, who are you talking about?
Allendale County Rescue Squad Nonprofit.
Okay, now you're getting somewhere. The Rescue Squad?
Yes.
And who's going to handle the money?
They will.
The Rescue Squad?
Yes.
Anybody in particular?
Their board of directors, however they handle their money that comes in there, because it's going to, it was applied through nonprofit.
Nonprofit, is that right?
Yes, it was done to the nonprofit side, so it will go to them.
Thank you for hitting that grant up, I probably, it's a good thing for the county.
Okay.
And to call's question, all that money is designated for certain.
Yes, it has to be spent accordingly. There had to be an itemized list of equipment that was to be purchased with the money and a current invoice for the purchase price. So it will have to be spent accordingly to what was included in there. It was for, just so you weren't here, Carl, it's for a new ambulance, it's for a quick response vehicle, it's for an upgrade on their radio communication system to an 800 megahertz, which will give them radio communications throughout the whole county and all the rural areas, and some cardiac equipment. There was four, I think four cardiac machines that they wanted, so that will, it will be, it will cover all of that. Now, secondly, I have just done another grant for the nonprofit side, and this grant is called the Gary Sinise Grant for First Responders. This is a non-match grant. It was done for the purposes of buying auto loaders, four auto loaders, which is hydraulic stretchers and loaders that will actually load the stretcher into the ambulance, because they're, under the situation, they're transporting quite a few patients that is taking extra manpower because of the weight of the patient, that they're having to send three, sometimes four people on one truck to pick up one patient, to transport on the non-emergent side to dialysis.
Question, is there anywhere you can include the coroner with that, because they need the same thing, stretcher?
Okay, we can, and it might be that if we get this grant to go through, one of these stretchers that they have, they could donate to county, because these are a particular stretcher that has to go with a particular unit, so the stretchers that they have now currently will be obsolete for them. They won't be able to use them.
Okay, because, because what she got, what the coroner got now, it's just a table, y'all should see it. It's really sad.
Okay. Well, that's something that, they may have an extra one over there. I can speak to Renique and see what she needs, but that might be able to be, but this.
What answer that, Renique is here. Renique, I don't know if she could use one of them or not. Is that the right thing you need? Okay, just want to be sure.
I'll see Renique, I'll talk to her, okay? But this Gary Sinise First Responder Grant is actually for 155,000, and it is going to cover four auto load systems and four stretchers is what it covers. Now, if we get the Gary Sinise First Responder Grant, it is a non-match grant, and I will know in 90 days, they'll review this in, in a quarter, and we got it in time for this quarter, so within 90 days, we know that we get this. In the event that we do not get the Gary Sinise First Responder Grant, there are community funding, a CMF grant through Rural Development that is for $50,000 each, so we could submit three of those grants. They can piggyback one on top of the other one. We could submit three of those to get to the 155,000 that we need, because it's $50,000 each. But if we don't get this one, and we have to go to the CMF grant, that's, that's through Rural Development, and there would be a match on that. And the match on the 155,000 would be a 25% match, which would be 39,000. In the event that we have to go that route, is there any match money that the county would be able, willing to provide a portion of the 39,000, or is it something that y'all can discuss?
Probably something we need to discuss. Absolutely need to discuss.
And I think we need, we need to push back a little bit on the nonprofit and see what they can come up with.
Well, the nonprofit, I have spoken to them about it, and they are committed to, to try to raise the money. I have spoken to them about a fundraiser, and I'm working with a gentleman that is going to help coordinate a fundraiser, but I wanted to ask, you know, if the county would take a portion of that match?
Well, I think then, if we can, and I think we will be successful in getting this, the grant for the 677,000 pieces of equipment.
Right.
And if they can come up with 30,000 for.
Right.
What they're receiving, then I think we need to sit down and talk with them.
Okay.
Because I think we've given them.
All the cameras, but they're researching it because one of the places they do want to put them is at the landings. But you have to have technology that we don't have at the landings.
You have to have self, you know, self, cell search to run over the.
Yeah, and as I was asking.
Was our litter officer included in these, Mr. Jim Evans, was he there?
He was not there. But, but Mr. Priest is going to get in touch with him and catch him up to date on it, so he will be included. And he also gave us some tarps and these flyers that go with it. And I'm gonna pass these on to Mr. All to give out at the recycling center so that when trucks come in and don't have tarps on them, he can give them tarps and telling them what they need to be doing to cover trucks. Because a lot of the littering is coming from trucks that things fly out the back. So I'm, I'm excited about what's going on. I think it's a good thing. And so I hope that y'all are happy with what we've done so far. And the other thing is, we are still working on membership for the historical society. So if you have not joined, I have more membership forms here. And we will be having a retreat Tuesday, a planning retreat to kind of move us a little further along. So I do have those. So I think that's the report.
Thank you, Ms. Anne. Next, Mr. Dean Allen.
Well, I came for one thing, but I'm gonna have two things on my plate now. I want to say to y'all about Charles and ask this rezoning. The problem is with him is he doesn't understand that this appeals board cannot change anything. That they can only decide if y'all made an error in not agreeing to the rezoning. He doesn't understand that. So somebody needs to explain that to him. And secondly, he has already been told by the mayor and the council of Sycamore that they are not going to agree to any rezoning of that piece of property. It's been plainly put to him in plain English that that is not going to happen. And secondly, the town's sycamore does not have public water and it doesn't have public sewage. And in order to maintain a residential community like they're discussing, you have to have a commercial water system and you have to have a commercial septic system, which costs thousands of dollars to put in. And the piece of property is not big enough to accommodate the commercial well and the septic system. Because you have to have 150 feet around a commercial well with no obstruction. There's nowhere on that piece of property that you can drill a well and draw 150-foot circle around it without either running into my property, to his house, or the state right away. And if he got the well down, the drainage system from the septic system would interfere with it. So it's a dead duck. Sorry about his bad look. Secondly, okay, I'm gonna move forward with this. Y'all know I had done the FY23 funding grant for the 677,000 through Congressman Clyburn's office. The good news is, is that Mr. Goodson has had a meeting with them and he and I both have another meeting with them next week. We are 99% sure from what we've been told that we are going to get the grant. It's a non-match grant and Congressman Clyburn's office has handed it back down. Instead of it going through appropriations, it's gonna go back down to urban development. And I'm gonna meet with Bill Goodson in the morning at 11 o'clock. We're gonna redo the structure. It's gonna be the same contents of the original grant. They just want it put on USDA urban grant application. So it's basically just gonna be a redo to meet their qualifications and resubmit that to them in Bamberg next week. But from all accounts, it is gonna pass. We are gonna get the money. If it went through appropriations, we wouldn't get the money until sometime fiscal year of 2023. Going through urban development, it can come faster.
When you say we're gonna get the money, who are you talking about?
Allendale County Rescue Squad nonprofit.
Okay, now you're getting somewhere. The Rescue Squad?
Yes.
And who's gonna handle the money?
They will.
The Rescue Squad, anybody in particular?
Their board of directors. However they handle their money that comes in there. Because it's going to the, it was applied through nonprofit.
Nonprofit, is that right?
Yes, it was done through the nonprofit side, so it will go to them.
Thank you for hitting that grant up. It's a good thing for the county.
Okay.
And the calls, question. All that money is designated for certain.
Yes, it has to be spent accordingly. There had to be an itemized list of equipment that was to be purchased with the money and a current invoice for the purchase price. So it will have to be spent accordingly to what was included in there. It was for, just so you weren't here, Carl, it's for a new ambulance. It's for a quick response vehicle. It's for an upgrade on their radio communication system to an 800 megahertz, which will give them radio communications throughout the whole county and all the rural areas and some cardiac equipment. There was four, I think, four cardiac machines that they wanted. So that will, it will be, it will cover all of that. Now, secondly, I have just done another grant for the nonprofit side. And this grant is called the Gary Sinise Grant for First Responders. This is a non-match grant. It was done for the purposes of buying auto loaders, four auto loaders, which is hydraulic stretchers and loaders that will actually load the stretcher into the ambulance. Because they're, under the situation, they're transporting quite a few patients that is taking extra manpower because of the weight of the patient that they're having to send three, sometimes four people on one truck to pick up one patient to transport on the non-emergent side to dialysis.
Question, is there anywhere you can include the coroner with that? Because they need the same thing stretcher.
Okay, we could. And it might be that if we get this grant to go through, one of these stretchers that they have, they could donate to county because these are a particular stretcher that has to go with a particular unit. So the stretchers that they have now currently will be obsolete for them. They won't be able to use them.
Okay, because, because what she got, what the coroner got now, it's just a table. Y'all should see it. It's really sad.
Okay. Well, that's something that, they may have an extra one over there. I can speak to Renee and see what she needs. But that might be able to be. But this.
What answer that Renee is here, Renee, I don't know if she could use one of them or not. Is that the right thing you need? Okay, just wanna be sure.
I'll see Renee, I'll talk to her, okay? But this Gary Sinise First Responder Grant is actually for 155,000 and it is gonna cover four auto load systems and four stretchers is what it covers. Now, if we get the Gary Sinise First Responder Grant, it is a non-match grant. And I will know in 90 days. They'll review this in a quarter and we got it in time for this quarter. So within 90 days, we know that we get this. In the event that we do not get the Gary Sinise First Responder Grant, there are community funding, a CMF grant through Rural Development that is for $50,000 each. So we could submit three of those grants. They can piggyback one on top of the other one. We could submit three of those to get to the 155,000 that we need because it's $50,000 each. But if we don't get this one and we have to go to the CMF grant, that's, that's through Rural Development and there would be a match on that. And the match on the 155,000 would be a 25% match, which would be 39,000. In the event that we have to go that route, is there any match money that the county would be able, willing to provide a portion of the 39,000? Or is it something that y'all can discuss?
Probably something we need to discuss. Absolutely need to discuss.
And I think we need, we need to push back a little bit on the nonprofit to see what they can come up with.
Well, the nonprofit, I have spoken to them about it and they are committed to try to raise the money. I have spoken to them about a fundraiser and I'm working with a gentleman that is gonna help coordinate a fundraiser. But I wanted to ask, you know, if the county would take a portion of that match?
Well, I think then if we can, and I think we will be successful in getting this, the grant for the 677,000. Pieces of equipment.
Right.
And if they can come up with 30,000 for what they're receiving, then I think we need to sit down and talk with them. Because I think we've given them a sizable gift in our name.
Right.
So fundraiser, I kinda like to see them meet us at least half.
Right. Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, I know, I knew and I told them upfront that you weren't gonna hand over 39,000. But I said, I will go to them and ask them if they will give a portion of that. Whatever y'all could discuss and tell me where you, where the county is as far as if they can match any of it, then I will try to help them figure out the rest of the 39,000, be it fundraiser, be if they have extra money or whatever. We're looking at, we may as well round it up 40,000. And if y'all could come up with a number in the next 90 days that y'all will give, if you're willing to give a match, tell me what you're willing to do and then I'll figure out the strategy to get the rest with them.
Well, I'm gonna agree as well with the chair, let's say that we would have to discuss it.
Right.
And then, you know, we don't want to put something out there that we're gonna agree to it.
Right.
So I think we got your presentation and once we go in and the county discuss it.
Right, and then you can get back to me.
Mr. Chair.
And this is a copy of the.
That's what you said, we need to discuss it, so.
That's a copy of the current 155,000 grant that is done now. We'll have to answer in 90 days on that.
All right, thank you, Dean. Appreciate everything you did for the county. Okay, that's our public comments. No one else? Denmark Technical College, Dr. Russ, you're next.
Good evening, everyone. I am here representing Denmark Technical College and our president is Dr. Willie L. Todd Jr. And I am Dr. Pedro Rautz. I'm the executive assistant to the president there at Denmark Technical College. We thank you so much for allowing us to just talk, come and talk to you for a couple of minutes about the great things that are happening at Denmark Technical College as we're forging onward. This is just a, so a couple of slides that we put together with just general information that you can find on our website about Denmark Technical College. We're here tonight though, or this evening primarily because we want to cultivate and to continue to grow the relationship with Allendale County and to let you know that Denmark Technical College is your technical college. As you know, we serve Allendale County, Barnwell County and Allendale, Barnwell and Bamberg Counties. We're proud of our programs, our majors there. And again, we're here so that you guys can help us to continue to grow. There's no secret that, you know, a couple of years ago, we were threatened to be shut down. But we are back in full effect and we're proud of what we're doing there and everything is moving in the right direction. And so we're here to rejuvenate our relationship with Allendale County and for you guys to help us as ambassadors to Denmark Technical College. Okay, we, our workforce development and continuing education area is an area that we're very proud of. We do realize that we're in competition with the University of South Carolina. We're in competition with South Carolina State University. We're in competition with Clapham University. And so we're, we're proud of the niche that we have at Denmark Technical College in our workforce development and continuing educational, continuing education programs. Here, just to, you know, I know I only have three minutes, but I want to point out a couple of areas that we're really, really proud of, that we're really growing at Denmark Technical College that no other college in the area is doing. And that is our CDL program and our welding program. Those are two of our popular ones, as well as our lobotomy program and our medical terminology programs. We also have apprentice trainings with McLeod, McLeod Health and Swiss Chrono. We're proud of the developments in those areas as well. In the fall of 2021, we are proud to say that we have 621 students. And just on April 30th, we graduated 107 students. And these are just a couple of our current events. Just last week, our president, Dr. Willie L. Todd Jr., was named South Carolina Association for Technical College Commissioners CEO of the Year for 2022. And that, of course, just so you'll have a little background on that, he competed against all of the technical college presidents in the state of South Carolina. So we're very proud of the leadership that he is providing to Denmark Technical College. And then I just wanted to put on here, and thanks to Mr. Hutto and Ms. Judy for their assistance with this. We are, we wanted to highlight, we have April Kelly Drummond. She is one of the CEOs with Denny's as our commencement speaker. And we are proud to now be adding to our athletic offerings, men's and women's track and field and women's volleyball. And also, we just graduated our first class of EMTs. So we're also proud of that. Okay, so again, we, we just wanted to, to come and to talk about Denmark Technical College and to regenerate, rejuvenate our relationship with Allendale County. If there's anything that we as Denmark Technical College can do for Allendale County or Allendale County can do for us, our partnerships that we can engage in, we are ready and willing for that to happen. I've already spoken with Ms. Judy about making sure that, that we remain for whatever time that we are allotted on the agenda so that we can keep you up to date with what is going on at your technical college. Thank you so much and I'll answer any questions if there are any questions. Yes, sir.
Dr. Russ, thanks for coming.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me. Got one quick question. Several, I would say several years ago.
Yes, sir.
There was an honor concerning Denmark Tech and possibly offering commercial pilot license?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
Where's that?
Yes, sir. We actually, and this is, this PowerPoint was generated after we've been in discussion about this. But Bamberg County actually has an airport there and we are looking to partner with them and we've been in several meetings in those partnerships, in that partnership with Bamberg County to actually bring an aeronautics program to Denmark Technical College. And they actually have somebody there that is gonna come onto our campus and teach the courses.
So that's moving?
That is moving, yes, sir. And also, they, they're looking at some, of course, with that kind of traffic there, a hotel with James Clyburn's group is gonna help to, to bring that to that area. So that is coming to this area so people won't have to go to Orangeburg or, I'm trying to think what's closest here to here, Augusta maybe, for hotels that, you know, they will be able to go to Bamberg for that.
Dr. Russ, would you be, y'all have offered any classes in Allendale? You know, we have a Denmark Tech site here in Allendale.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
It's not being utilized.
Yes, ma'am.
And you have the space. So you used to have classes here for our citizens of Allendale County.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to see some more classes back in Allendale County.
Yes, ma'am.
People that who don't have transportation.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, you got the building here, you know, county is supporting you guys.
Yes, ma'am.
The building, but you're not utilizing the building.
Yes, ma'am.
So I think it's kind of, it's a beautiful building and I just think our constituents are not being served like need be.
Yes, ma'am.
And whatever Denmark Tech can do to assist them, I think that it would be great to have some more classes here back in Allendale County where you used to have them here.
Yes, ma'am. And we are more than willing to do that. But this is, this is where the partnership has to be a two-way street. We need you guys to help us with students because we can't have courses if, in a, in a certain place if we're not, if we don't have students there. And so, yes, ma'am, I will take that back to our VP for Academic Affairs, make sure that she is looking into that.
Well, I would also add, I used to be a recruiter.
Yes, ma'am.
So you got to get your recruiters out to recruit the students.
Yes, ma'am. I will definitely.
We got students, you know, we want to help our people.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, we got a university here, so you got competition, like you said.
Right.
And the building is not being utilized. So therefore, if you're not gonna utilize the building, council just not gonna pay for servicing, I'm just speaking for myself.
Right.
Not for council, but that's something we need to discuss.
Yes, ma'am.
But I think it's a beautiful building, Denmark Tech got a sign and it's not being used. And we used to have computer classes and everything there. So it would be nice if we can have some services here for our constituents to utilize that building on Denmark Tech's side.
Yes, ma'am. I would definitely take that back to them and make sure that that is noted. And in our next, in the next meeting, I will give you an update on what I was able to find out on that.
You brought an interesting subject. How many students does Denmark Tech have from Allendale County?
Now, that number, I'm not sure of, but I will.
I think I'd like to know that. How many students?
We're serving, you're serving here. Yeah, we're serving here. Yes, sir.
Our concern's Allendale County kids. And second of all, I understand commercial airline pilots or whatever you got going to Bamberg Airport. But I mean, how many kids do you have in the CDL program? Because how many kids in the CDL program you guys are advertising, I mean? Well, there was a point you guys were gonna bring that over to Allendale County.
Uh huh.
And I don't know what happened. I got an idea. I know what happened, but I mean, just how many kids are in the CDL program? I'd be interested in knowing that.
Yes, sir. The CDL program, we can only take around 18 students in one cohort. So that's how that program runs. And so, yes, sir, I will take those, those notes back and, and bring you a report back in the next meeting.
And Dr. Russ, also, does Denmark Tech do a lot with Allendale County school students?
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm not saying to you they're not serving Allendale County, because they is.
Right.
Because they were close to me at the high school.
Yes, ma'am.
But I'm speaking on the site that we have.
Here, yes, ma'am. I do understand.
So I want you to be clear that y'all is doing a lot with the schools, with the students while this is heading graduate jet.
Yes, ma'am.
So, but I'm thinking about the ones that are already graduated and to utilize the building that we have not being occupied.
Yes, ma'am. I would definitely give you up-to-date information on that. Also, just as I go to my seat, I want to just let you guys know for, for many of you that know Mr. James Bowden. We just started and we're proud of this in, with a collaboration with Santee Cooper, Dominion Energy and Duke Energy. We're, we're starting our line worker range program and we're, we're, we'll be having a dedication on June 1st of that site. And Mr. James Bowden, who retired from Duke Energy after 42 years, that site will be named after him. And so we'll be doing a ceremony there in his honor on June 1st. And so that's a new program. We're excited about it. We just started it this week. And we have three students in that program. And so we're, we're just excited about it. And please, we invite you to go to our website and look at all of our programs and all of our offerings and please, please, please help us as much as you can with the recruitment of students. We, we really don't care if they're from Allendale County or not, but you can help us with Allendale County students. So please.
We care if they're from Allendale County.
Right, I know, that's.
Unless we're our kids, what we're concerned about.
Right, and that's what I said, you know, please help us to recruit Allendale County students to your technical school. Denmark Technical College is your technical school. So thank you so much. Are there any other questions?
I got one statement. I want to be aware of that. As of the last week, there were 300 jobs in Allendale County for people to go to work. And if we had some sort of technical assistance to get these people, prepare a resume and whatever else technically, it would be great. So it looks to me like you can stress that point. That would be a good recruiting.
Yes, sir.
Another thing, how you do your recruiting is questionable. And I'll explain that sometime, but you don't reach any, whenever you do have a program, you don't put the word out.
Well.
I see a little sign, that little sign up there in the town park in Allendale. Can't see it half the time because of the bushes. And that's the only thing I know that you do to tell the students and the possible students what you have to offer. And I think you could need to work on that.
Yes, sir. And we also need you guys as our advocates to help to advocate for equity in funding for all universities and schools. And I think you'll see a difference. At Denmark Technical College, we're doing the very best that we can with what we have. And it, we, that's why we're wanting to meet with our county constituents, our county stakeholders to assist us in making sure that we have the, if we have whatever we have, I can assure you that it is being utilized to, to the best event. Right now, we're working on with two recruiters and one of them is the director of, of the area. And I think that if you would do a comparison, you would see that at some other schools, that that is not the case. So I, I just wanted to, to come, talk about Denmark Technical College. We're doing great things with what we have as we forge onward under the leadership of Dr. Willie Todd and we appreciate and would welcome all of your assistance. I want to say thank you also to Ms. Judy, who's been great, and Mr. Hutto for their assistance with, with bringing, getting us here.
Thank you, Dr. Russ. All right, Mr. Cohen and Ms. Dever from the Allendale County Airport. You guys are next. Welcome. Nice to see you.
Good, good evening, everyone. I'm here.
Let's open my.
I'm here this evening on behalf of the airport and its commissioners. Our bank accounts is the issue here and the business and the hangar accounts are part of those two accounts that we have. They were taken over by the state last year. We have had many conversations in reacquiring our accounts, but as of today, we still have not received our accounts back.
Taken over by the state, Ms. Creach?
I'm saying the count, you know, the state took the accounts and put them all into one county, under the county. Our accounts went with it.
The state took them or the county took them?
The county. I'm saying, it was under the state, the state's direction.
Clear. The county took it, which is.
Okay.
Okay. He used to, excuse me.
Yes.
My recollection, you used to have a hangar account, pretty much.
Yes.
And you still got the hangar account.
Yes.
Was that taken also?
Yes, that and our business account.
And, and your business account?
Yes.
Wouldn't worry about.
So at, at our commission meeting in March, we will suggest that we need to be present, present this before you, the county council, so that we can have our accounts placed back under the airport commission. The bylaws in Article Four under Officers states that the treasurer shall have custody of all funds, securities and property of the commission, under supervision of the commission. So we would like is for this county council to reach out to me or the airport commission to help us in correcting this issue. So that's really all I have to say and I want to thank you all and I do look forward to meeting with you. We, we look forward to meeting with you on this issue.
One other question. Have you been keeping up your running balance of what should be, what's?
Yes.
Because if I remember, on a hangar, they generally would pay on a yearly basis or monthly basis. And that money would be deposited in that hangar account. Are the, are the renters still paying their bills?
Yes, they are.
Are you making deposit into the hangar account?
Yes, they are. They pay. I'm sorry.
The hangar account generally, by FAA rule and also SE aeronautics, can only be used for certain things.
Yes.
And we gotta show that, that the hangars are supported even though the hangars have been paid for. Thanks goodness, because it's taken us 20 years to pay for them. So the money that we're going in to the hangar account will be used for future addition to the airport hangars.
Yes.
But what I'm hearing now, the money is still being collected, still being deposited. You keeping a running balance. You know what's there or should be there.
Yes.
But you don't have access to it.
Right. We have, we have access only if we go through the treasurer and that's what we have been doing. And we only used one payment, I think a few, and that was during repairs only for the hangars. That's the only thing that can come out of that money and that's the only thing that we have used it. We have all our records and we do have current accounts
I know.
for every hangar that's paid and it's usually paid every three months, but some people pay yearly, some six months. But it is running and all the hangars are rented.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I'm the chair, I'm the treasurer of the commission and I do know how much our account has, but the control of the account is in the county.
Okay.
And we are asking what we need to do to return the control to us.
Back to you.
Really, that's basically what we're here for. That's what we need to do to get it returned to us. returned to us.
I don't know the proper protocol. I may just drop-
Well, I think we just gotta sit down with the administrator and see exactly what it would take to turn it back over to you.
What accounts are there? You said there's two different accounts, the hangar account and a-
Business account.
The business account, hangar account.
The business account is for when we have a fence at the airport and it covers that.
If I may ask, in this business account, just like fuel at the airport, when you guys sell the fuel, when you sell the fuel, does the county pay for that fuel upfront? Or do you guys pay it out in the business account? Is it kind of, you guys pay for it? How does it work? I don't know. That's why I'm asking.
How it goes is that I order the fuel, and then I send a, a, a order form to the county and they pay for it.
Okay.
And then the-
Sales reimbursed.
Yeah, they get reimbursed as we sell the count, the, um, the fuel. The fueling farm, the company that, um-
Right.
Does the credit cards, they send the checks to the county. So, all the money goes to, back directly to the county. It doesn't come in through the airport.
When you guys get a percentage of that profit? Or does the profit, all profit go to you guys? Or how does that work?
The profit, everything goes to the county.
Okay.
So we don't get anything off of that.
How's fuel sales been?
That's my next question.
With the COVID and the prices of gas that went down tremendously since COVID, but the last two months was a great increase. Last month, we had the second highest sale through the history of the airport.
How did it cost the fuel?
It is very expensive. We, I bought fuel last month and I spent, it was thirty-five thousand for that fuel. But the thing is that when we purchase fuel, it's already, the money has already been paid back for that fuel. So, we always, always purchase at a certain amount. So, all the money that is spent always come back. We have never lost any money on fuel, ever.
Are we still the lowest in our region right now?
Not actually. Some people, because we had to purchase at such a high rate, we, our price is still a lot lower. And we still did more, doing more business than all the other airports in our area. So they are still coming to Allendale because of the write-ups that we get and the fact that we kept our fuel fair. When the prices of fuel went up, many of the airports and a lot of policies, they was really complaining about that. They went up without purchasing more fuel. We in Allendale did not go up until we purchased more fuel. And they respected that and they came.
So you didn't cheat it?
No. And they, they liked that.
Fuel coming.
So this month has been a hit with the weather and then the, the new rise in COVID cases arising and the price of fuel has, everybody know, has really went up. So, sales so far is not, you know, coming in, you know, a lot of planes that are not flying right now.
I enjoyed the conversation we had on Saturday. You kind of filled me in on that. But didn't I ask about the takeoff and the landing? What's the number? Are you keeping the tab on the takeoff and landing?
Yeah, last month, we had a hundred and fifty-one planes.
Okay. Great. Alright, thank you, Ms. Dever.
Alright, thank y'all.
Take care. Our next, our council reports, I guess I'm first on the list here. First of all, Ms. Judy, we neglected the last couple meetings ahead. Want to thank you for the cog meal. I heard a lot of good things about it. Heard some great food. Didn't get to ten, but want to thank you for doing that for the county and the county councils. Thank you for doing that for us. Ms. Elaine, great event Saturday night for the employees. I hope they all enjoyed it. We had a couple of snafus and missing people or whatever. And anyway, we did what we needed to do. And I thank you. And I hope all the employees enjoyed it. And I look forward to us doing it again for all the county employees. Our employees are well-deserved. And while we're on the subject of employees, we're having a problem, as everybody in this country is getting and retaining employees, not retaining, but getting employees. We got a new employee handbook. We've all had to take a look at it. We kind of let it fall by the wayside. My suggestion to this council would be employee benefits. Instead of six months, a lot of industries I advertise for and doing now, they're going for like thirty days if you're here. And I think that may be an idea that we go for, if you're here for thirty days, you should be eligible for benefits. I don't think, nobody should have to wait six months or eighty days for benefits. And I mean, that's, that's something to throw out there. I just want to counsel, what do y'all, what did y'all saw from that? Our current, I think current handbook says you have to wait six months to be eligible for benefits.
I think six months is-
I think that's a little high.
Yeah. I would be willing to take a look at ninety days, but I think thirty days.
Yeah, I like the ninety. I like the ninety days.
Because thirty days, you really don't know if an employee you're gonna work out in thirty days. It's gonna take a couple months.
Well, I mean, my, my objective was to get somebody to come, get incentives. I mean, we don't have the highest pay scale in the world, although we're on that. Only thing with thirty days was maybe it's incentive for someone to come a little quicker to us. I mean, we can have any, whatever you guys want to do. But I just, I just think a hundred and eighty days, a lot, lots of weeks. I know, I wouldn't go somewhere, if I could go out here and make three dollars for one hour and getting benefits in thirty days, I sure as heck would wait less for Allendale County. You know what I mean?
Sixty days.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I think that what we need to do is get our policy and just read and see what really is in policy so we can have a clear vision of it. Because like you said, we're throwing these out, but you know, we're not implementing. So what we need to do is go back to our handbook. You know, it might be-
Your handbook says six months.
Okay, it says six months. And I believe, if it says that, then if you want to make some changes, then I think that we need to sit down and just put it to a vote and move forward, you know?
Well, I just want to put that out because we already have a handbook. We got a new handbook out there. We've let it fall by the wayside. I thought we'd be getting that new handbook for employees.
And we need to go back and, and, and look at the handbook because some things came up. And Walter and I had a conversation a couple weeks ago about the new handbook versus the old handbook. And until we approve that new handbook, we're still operating on the old handbook.
That's right. So we need to, we need to move forward instead of backwards. We need to keep going forward.
And since you said about the employees, Mr. Chair, I think it's a great idea that the municipalities gave their employees another bonus, showing loyalty. I mean, we sit and say how good they was, say how that was for our employees. And I think a lot of them really appreciate it. So if we can go back and give us more of that COVID money like the municipalities doing, because they gave two bonuses. It'd be great for our employees. If you really care about employees, we got money there. We can really give them another bonus.
Better look at your budgets.
I mean, we say, we know the money there.
Okay.
We need to discuss that in the executive session.
Okay.
I got a problem, I got a problem giving anybody a budget, but I do have a problem with the county checks bouncing. That's, that's my concern.
Why they know nothing with bounces?
Ain't nothing bouncing. I don't want them to start bouncing.
Okay.
Speaking of which, budget meeting, we need to discuss, we'll have our next budget meeting. My suggestions one day next week, we can talk about the executive session when it works for everybody else. I'm open for. And I'm trying to think. I think that's all I've got. Mr. Cohen, you'd be next on the list.
I don't have much either. I'd just like to get over what your chairman said to about Ms. Elaine and Ms. Isham and your whole crew. Everybody did a great job. Very much appreciated. And I've got a, well, I've got a partial Allendale County Public Safety Committee report. The fire department had thirty-nine calls this month. They had, due to the tornado, they had a bunch of overtime, a hundred and ninety-seven hours total overtime, which seventy-two of those were covered by volunteers. They still have a bunch of apparatus needing repairs. I think everybody's got a list. Got a bunch of maintenance stuff that needs to be done. So, I think we need to take that into consideration during the budget meeting. Next was the Allendale County EMS report. The county side has one paramedic hourly and two EMT hourlies. County EMT and paramedics are working approximately twelve hours in unscheduled overtime during a pay period. They are severely understaffed. We had a couple of incidents, incidences in the past month, well within two weeks, that calls were delayed because nobody was in the county qualified to transport them. So they had to actually delay those calls, which is unfortunate.
Everybody was out of county?
Mm-hmm. On transfers, had somebody in Savannah, another unit was on the way to Columbia, then had a little emergency call. Solish is, is begging and pleading for, for a couple more people. He's, I think he said he worked every holiday last year. He's working oodles overtime. I think generally the morale of that group's kind of low, so we need to-
What is the, does it give me a reason for being like that? I mean, is it just, we don't, we're not paying enough? Or is our pay not competitive? Or just nobody applying? Or what's the issue?
Well, pay's not competitive and, and we're not budgeting enough money to, to make the additional hires.
But here again, I think we need, from a personnel standpoint, we need to compare apples to apples, the benefits package versus what they're receiving from someplace else. Because I think overall, the paramedics and EMT are competitive, probably more competitive than any position we have in the county. We just gotta look at the whole package. And I think that's gonna have to be a marketing tool.
I agree with you. I mean, that's, again, going back to our benefits, excuse me, I'm sorry. Going back to our benefits package, I mean, we did the same thing. We had just Jody at nine-one-one. And we're like to study here, I meant to mention, I mean, we didn't know what other counties paying. And I don't have a problem taking a little bit of money, going a little bit ahead of what the other counties paying. If we got the money to do it, I'd rather have the best people make sure our people are taken care of. It's my concern. And I think we need to get Luc to give us a comparison as to what Ball, Bamberg, Hampton made. Let's, let's get right up there and top the game. We're doing that with sheriffs problem. We do it with nine-one-one. And we do what other departments. I don't think we should do it. There's no need for them to do that.
On Luc's behalf, he did send us a few months ago, that comparison. And our numbers are low. Not very low, but I think we should add. But nobody's knocking the door down to come to Allendale. Let's just be honest about it.
But here again, man, I, I think we need to look at the, the total package.
I agree. But if we're not being able to make hires, we gotta do something. Because that call's gonna happen and one of us need it. We have everybody out of county. And I don't want to be on that, that side of it. So if we can find some money to help these guys out, I think we need to do it. They had a hundred and five transports last month. They have a bunch of overtime, so. And that's all that, Mr. Chair.
Man, let me just add this. I was in Aiken today at a doctor's office and, and talking with the lady there. And she was very complimentary on the hospital. I didn't ask, I didn't ask what, what was her dealing with the hospital, but she was, she said, y'all gotta get a hospital.
I hear compliments weekly on that, for sure.
I agree. Alright.
Hey, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna add to that. I think we should, it'd be great to look at every department, every department.
I agree. I totally agree with you.
And, and come up with something. It's, it's kind of unfair that we're not being consistent with all departments. And we have gave raises to certain departments and we're overlooking the departments. We can't keep doing that. And that's why people coming up later in departments saying they need more because they done heard in the streets, we gonna give some. So I think that what we need to do to be consistent and fair to all the employees, that we take a look at all of them, see what they're making, so we can give them an increase. And not just hand pay.
I agree. Alright, Mr. Gooding?
None much except most of it around Southern Carolina Alliance. If you've noticed that the, the hydrogen peroxide boys, more and more traffic there. They're fixing to get moving. And the Dog Creek manufacturer's been hiring some people. They're gonna hire a lot more. And they're beginning to move. And in about two weeks, they'll put the shovel to the ground and put a new one-point-three-million-dollar spec building right there next to the, between the hydrogen peroxide plant and Doug Branch down there. So, Allendale County's got a lot of jobs. They have three hundred openings just last week. People looking for employees. And we look, you can look for about two hundred more job openings. When these two plants get going full steam, West Fraser gets to go in full steam. And for the life of me, I don't know where we're gonna get people that can go to work, or people that can even fill out a resume. And that is where we need the technical help here, Dr. Rousen. But we got a heck of a lot of jobs here in this, in this, Southern Carolina's gonna boil the jobs what we're developing this county sooner or later. This, that highway out there between Allendale and Fayetteville's gonna be jammed up with, with industry. That's just all I got to say.
Alright, Mr. Robson?
Yes, sir. Just quickly, Mr. Chairman, we had a SEDOT meeting on last Thursday. And this was concerning the new three oh one bridge that connects Scriven and Allendale County. The attendance was surprisingly quite well. We had many people from this side as we, from the Georgia side. And the actual engineering preliminary studies and also the engineering drawings has been completed. They will start out by and right away. It's, the actual project will begin in 2024 and be completed in 2026. It's gonna take about two years to do that new bridge. But it's certainly, certainly gonna be a welcome for, and I had a chance to talk with John Rice, that transporter water material between Georgia and South Carolina. And if you travel that bridge, it's pretty narrow. So it's gonna be actually much wider. You're gonna actually have a shoulder on the bridge itself that you don't have now. And it's gonna be a welcome sight. And it's gonna be about a mile in length from the time we start widening it from, it's about four thousand feet, which is a little less than a mile. So it's gonna be a, a welcome sight. We did ask concerning Low Savannah River Lines, our hiking trail, or nature trail. We did ask the question, could we actually get a study on the structural integrity of the old bridge that encloses the nature trail? And basically, what they've asked us to do is to send a letter to DOT. And I can, if we approve it, I will give it bill and kind of work some or something. But we just, they will consider doing an engineering study and a structural integrity study on the bridge itself, which could save us, well, will save us a lot of money. We can't utilize that trail like it should be, you know, forerunners and some of the other heavy vehicles. And a lot of folks who travel that nature trail has express entries and using their, their dirt bikes and et cetera. So, I will, at some point, make a motion that we, we get a letter to SEDOT. Also, on Thursday, we have the Low Savannah Council Government Executive Committee. And Chairwoman Taylor asked me to attend that in her absence. I am her alternate. A very good meeting. And got a lot done. Secondly, we talked several months ago about the trailer from Vaughn Bowling for use as the animal control new office. And we got a letter from Rick asking that, well, telling us that he couldn't give it to us, but he could actually do half the price. So, I will make a motion that we'll go ahead and, and purchase that double-wide trailer for animal control.
What was that price?
Twenty-five hundred.
Okay. What about, did it give you a price, full price? And just ask a question, your price of moving?
No, no.
That was my scary part there.
Well, we do know, and based on some numbers that we've seen, and Rick, I think we talked about it, you know, it's probably gonna be at least five thousand to move it. So we looking at-
Well, first, I got from private people, it was eight-five-hundred-ten. And you had gone and told me in like United States, five to seven. So I mean, I really don't have a problem, you know, with the, we need it for the animal shelter. I got no problem with that.
Where the money come from?
Well, you know, there is on that one cent sale tax, there is some money for the animal control. So, that money could certainly come from the animal control one cent sale tax. Okay? Also, next Thursday, we'll be attending the Association of County, our first meeting for the year under our new president, Paul Kane, who's from O'Conne County. And we will certainly keep council informing what's going on at, at the state level. A lot of new laws passed this year in our legislators. And of course, we had, we districted them. And luckily, our council was able to keep our district and council district intact. And that's certainly a plus. Recreation, baseball, full swing. Kids are enjoying it from Allendale and Fayetteville. I'll give you a full-blown report next month. Lastly, one of the things that I try to do as TAC committee chairperson is kind of keep you informed what's going on. We talked last month about the intersection work that we've had done within Allendale and Ballin County. We've had a lot of work on intersection. The latest intersection project is the three-twenty-one-two-seventy-eight. Well, I got a call this week from a business owner in Fayetteville. Well, I got a call this week from a business owner in Fairfax. And he indicated he's been trying to find out who we needed to talk to concerning that 321-278 intersection. Luckily, one of our visitors that attended meeting on a regular basis asked him to call me, and he did. So we were able to get in touch with SEDOT. Were able to talk with Mayor Riley from Fairfax Town. And she had him to visit their meeting on Monday. And we're trying to get SEDOT and the contractor to pull back on some of the works that have been proposed. And there's a meeting scheduled with the business owner and SEDOT for Thursday, the 26th. And hopefully, we can resolve some of the issues. And what's going to happen in the stove, in the frontage of the business, it's going to actually destroy the ability for him to load and unload. And that's, that's kind of unheard of. So we'll certainly keep council informed on that. And lastly, we have in our presence a young lady from Allendale and Fairfax. Ms. Tanya, I mean, excuse me, Jo, uh, Jordan? Jordan Carter. Would you come up? Every year, the Association of County selects four counties to present scholarships to students in each of the counties. And Carl, you remember, we did it about six years ago when we got selected. The young lady and Ms. Carter actually sent in and applied for the, for the scholarship. This is the South Carolina Association of Counties. They only give four random scholarship each year. And they randomly select the county to, to be recipients of, of the scholarship. So you were selected, and we're certainly proud. This is a plaque presented by our chairperson and council. And it reads, "Presented to Jordan Kakera." Kakera Carter for outstanding academic achievement accomplishment from Allendale County Council. And we want to say congratulations to you, Jordan. And glad you took the effort and time to apply.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Teresa?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, our minister is absent tonight. And I have some questions I want to ask him that we need to, as council members, we need to be made aware of, that some things that are being done. I want you to look at your expense reports that you get. Um, but he's gave us a letter this month containing to the expense report. And I have some questions because on the expense report, unless y'all know the answers, y'all can help me. On the, with the letter he sent to us, for the current balance, actual balance for this year, um, he has, I want to know what the peripaties mean. Is that the money we got, or is that the money we going to get? Or what is, the one for the actual current actual balance there is $1,616,998.30. That's for the cash on hand. Next, he have an unaccounted bank, which no longer exists. I don't know what this means. All right, then next he got Carolina Commercial Bank in peripaties, $3,652.19. Got lost, um, funds for the HCB, $36,000. What really got me was the treasure access account. It's got in peripaties, $6,297,453.81. Then it comes down to the reserve fund. Peripaties, again, is $6,297,43, excuse me, $6,297,453.81. Then it comes down to the, um, the total type one liability in peripaties, the same amount. And I'm not sure what this means, and if y'all know what it means, please tell me. Because I mean, I don't understand it. Got prior year actual balance and got current year actual balance, but it got in the peripaties, and I need to clarify.
Mr. Teresa, um, I think this is a, if you're reading the second paragraph, he said, "I have attached a copy of the trial balance, which was printed July 1st, 2020," for proof of what he was explaining in that first paragraph. So I think it was just proof of showing in 2020 that the QS1 system was not being used properly, and that was an example of it.
And I know that we go on the Quick Book, however, you know.
This is not current, this is what was printed off in 2020.
Okay, and well, I went more farther than that. Because I, even though he gave a letter, when I hauled him on this letter, and everybody can get different interpretation when you read something. But I had some concerns because in our expense report, there are checks not in sequence. So if check's not in sequence, where are those checks? Are they voided, or, or what happened to the check? Because it goes to the treasure office. She can't balance the books if the check's not in sequence, not knowing where the check at. Make sense? Okay. Another problem we have in this county, which I, um, let's see, I got some information here, but I'm not going to hand it out this month. I'm going to wait till Mr. Goodson get back, because I need to ask him a question before we, before I move farther on it, because I want to make sure I'm clear on it. But also, we are not following our own rules and regulations on getting three bids in time to spend money for this county. You know, I see substantial amount of money being spent. And I wanted to ask him the question. One was, Lane, excuse me, Miss Lane, I got to come to you, I'm sorry. Lane, Mr. Goodson in here, Lane. I see on one outline that a substantial lot of money was spent in this county during this tenure. Did you do three bids?
No, because the administrator came in, into my office, and he, he did a recommendation that he wanted to do something to, for the county employees. And he recommended that we use rate.
Well, okay, that's not the rules and regulations, I mean, that's not following the decision. Now, I don't like to talk and ask the administrator, but he's not here. But I do have on here where, you know, for one month, and it just arranged flag, y'all, it may not be enough, but y'all, but it means something to me. $9,000 and one, $97,000 in one month spent.
Ninety-seven and ninety? Ninety-seven hundred.
Well, let me go, ninety-seven hundred. Nine thousand, seven hundred and some dollars. And, um, and I'm not knocking it, if you do it, that's fine. But we need to place, follow the rules and regulations and be consistent. Because if Lane office can do it, other office can do it. We need to nip it in the bud. I'm going to give y'all a copy of it. But I really want to talk to the administrator, because he's not telling us. He's not telling us what he's spending. He's not telling, he's not following the guidelines. And he's hiring people with higher salary than people that's already been working here for years and ain't making no money. We don't know what they make. And then I go and I find out, they're making more money than people been here 16 years. There's problems, y'all. I don't know what y'all want to do about it, but we can talk in the executive session. But I'll give y'all a copy of it, what I got. Because what he gave me as a financial report, which we got in our package last month, is not the same financial report I got from somebody else to pull off a QS1. So the white pages are not being submitted. We got some problems. Okay, but I'm going to give y'all a copy of it, so you can see, we don't think I'm just trying to.
So you got a QS1 report and you got a Quick Book report?
No, no Quick Book, me on Quick Book yet. That's not even been done yet. But what I got showing there, like I said, the red flag came with it. I'm sorry, I didn't stand up. Red flag came with me and Ms. Lane, because she's spending so much money. And I'm like, you picked bids, and I was going to ask Mr. Goodson, how many people bid? So I'm glad he's not here, and I'm glad she's here. Okay, that's okay. But we got to be consistent in what we do and be fair. And that go for the administrator too, because he shouldn't tell you what, well, we got to follow, see what you got to follow.
It sound like the administrator made that call, man, huh?
Well, he shouldn't.
And we need to be talking to him.
Well, he's not here, so I got Lane here, so I wanted to ask.
Thank you, man.
And we can discuss everything else in the executive session.
All right, has anybody else got anything we need to talk about? One thing, if I can go back, um, I did get a letter, and I apologize if I missed this, I put it in my folder, talk about Muir Strategic, which is Darren Morris, Jim Lee's doing the consolidation study for us. Gave me an update, I asked him to give us update. He had a strategic, strategic planning, uh, meeting with Sheriff Tom Carter and Chief Deputy Charles Ral. Like he says, very productive. They had developed, developed draft, organized structure for the Sheriff's Department, and secondary organizational chart showing a consolidation model. Both models would provide 24-hour coverage in support for investigation, civil process, et cetera. And they're looking at what it's going to cost. Basically, he's, they're well in the process of what it's going to cost to offer 24-hour service to citizens in Allendale County. They could get us a little bit more money quicker. And then they've also doing the study as for consolidation. There are two different studies going on, I guess is the best way, what I'm, what I'm trying to say is. They're trying to find out what we can do to get money quicker from the state to help us pay for 24-hour service for our citizens. And they're also doing the study as far as consolidating all law enforcement, which will be, which is six to eight months down the road. Okay. All right, you go to executive session?
Mr. Chairman, I have two things.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Warren, I apologize.
I have two things for executive session.
Okay, that's it, it's executive session?
Yes.
Uh, no more business?
Motion to go into executive session.
Three-minute break. Three, all right, all right. Second, second. All papers? All right, names, all right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, making the motion that we accept the, uh, the, uh, amended MOU between Allenelle County and the town of Allenelle and Tom, and Sheriff Tom Cottler.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Aye. Passed.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, making motion that we, uh, go ahead and, and record the deed and accept the restriction and conditions with the Allenelle County Museum Board and Historical Society. Effective immediately.
Right here. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Aye. Motion passed.
Chairman, making motion that we ask administrator to write a letter to SCDOT, we asking them to consider doing a structuring integrity, integrity, structural integrity, integrity of the, uh, the bridge.
Second. You talking about the old bridge, Greg, Mr. Sir?
Yeah, this is the-
Structural integrity of the old bridge, walk-in track.
Walk-in track.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's my motion.
I've got second, Councilman Goody, all in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Aye.
And lastly, uh, make a motion that we verify the animal control as part of our one cent sale tax referendum and use the portion of that money to purchase the trailer from Vaughn, Vaughn Bowlin Group and also move to the location at the existing location.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Motion passed.
Mr. Chairman, there being that to ask that I have.
That's all you got?
Make a motion where your-